So as a preliminary matter, this is Larry Murphy, Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Peter Pecos?
Yes.
Woody Knight?
Yes.
Mary Stone?
Yes.
Scott Kinter?
Yes.
Steve Manjoe?
Yes.
And town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martha Taylor, Planning Director?
Yes.
Kristen Grubbs, Assistant Town Planner?
Yes.
And for anticipated speakers and presenters from Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, I don't know if either of them are here, either Ian Burns or Kayla Rennie will be with us. Others, Michael McNiff and Bob Griffin regarding.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see them yet.
No, okay. And we don't know if there's any one going to be here for seven bittersweet yet, I guess. Good evening. This February twenty one, twenty twenty four, open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of twenty twenty three, which extends the governor's March twelfth, twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty, till March thirty one, twenty twenty five. This order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the planning board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website and which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http backslash backslash zoom.us and entering meeting ID eight three two seven one four one three zero five six, passcode one zero eight seven nine zero, or by calling one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine, excuse me, and entering the meeting ID number and passcode when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video indoor telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable channel nine on Zoom and that www.tncTV.org and the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or other representatives may be called upon to speak and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you've been called. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer using your mute button or on your phone star six to toggle mute or unmute when you're not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets and cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through me, taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. There will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and or ask questions as follows. I will seek questions and comments through the Zoom raised hand function. For video conference participants to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more function next to your name. For telephone participants to raise your hand in a Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click on the raised hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant, participant, or representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of those in the raised hand column and again afford the participant, applicant, or representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record and again, the participant, applicant, or representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. Finally, please note that each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by rule call vote. So, seven oh five, turning to the first item on the agenda, it's liaison and meeting reports. Martha, do you have anything from the select board?
Um, the last select board agenda was actually quite light, so I did not attend the meeting. The items on the agenda, there were some requests for public property use and some some grants. Grants and donations, a couple of them are significant though, emergency management performance grant twenty seven hundred dollars for the police department and a fifteen thousand five hundred dollar grant for the fires, fire department, which was a good thing. That's, that was it.
Okay, thank you, Martha. Next is ZBA, that's me. They, a regular monthly meeting was last, last week on the fifteenth. There were actually three public hearings on the agenda. The first for seventy six Northern Boulevard was an appeal from the building commissioner and a neighbor's appeal from the building commissioner's request for enforcement. A lot of interesting legal and factual issues in the case, nothing that's going to come before us, though. Uh, the matter wasn't resolved and it was further continued until their March meeting. Uh, there was on the agenda, special permit finding for ten Porton Way. That was not opened because of issues with butter notices, so that'll have to be renoticed. And lastly, they tentatively approved a detached accessory apartment for Three River Street. Um, and their meeting in March will be not the usual third Thursday of the month. In March, instead, they're meeting on the fourteenth of March. And that's all I have for the ZBA. So that's conservation. What do you?
Conservation was supposed to be meet last night, but they're meeting tomorrow night due to a agenda posting problem in the holiday on Monday, so the meeting will be tomorrow night.
Thanks, Woody. Martha, anything from MBPC?
A few things and also just to follow up on Woody's comment. We do have a new conservation agent, Sean Young, who started on Tuesday. So he's getting up to speed and we look forward to working with him.
Good.
Regarding MBPC, the commissioner's meeting was held last Thursday. Main topic of conversation was the budget. They typically do two budgets during the year, the initial budget based on all the funding that they know that they have in hand, and then a second budget, which reflects the grant funding that they've received during the year. So commissioners went through both that second budget for FY twenty four as well as the first budget for FY twenty five and also voted to set the annual assessments for for all the member communities. And as they had done in the past, they have raised the assessment, voted to raise the assessment by two point four nine percent. That brings our assessment up to, I think, two thousand five hundred sixty two dollars, if I remember correctly. And as one of the commissioners said during the meeting, that's like the best deal in town. We, we receive so much from MBPC, their services are just fabulous. And I don't think we could do our jobs without them, so. Um, the planner's meeting is tomorrow and the main topic will actually be updates from all of their program managers. They've got a lot going on. As you know, we've been involved in some of it.
Very good. Thank you, Martha. Next item on the agenda is the planning director's report. Martha?
Um, to be honest, I don't really have a whole lot to report. We've been focusing mostly on the MBTA community zoning, the hazard mitigation plan update. Um, I think I might have mentioned that we had an upcoming in-house meeting to finalize some of the modules and we're starting a kickoff of the final module, module six two, which will focus on developing the hazard mitigation action plan and maintenance plan. And we're continuing our work with MBPC on the housing production plan. Have had one tentative inquiry to talk about a potential subdivision, but haven't had an opportunity to follow up on that yet. So I'm afraid that's it. We have a few more minutes.
We do have a few more minutes, seven ten. We can't get into the public hearings until seven fifteen. Um, we can look at the minutes. Has everyone, everyone board members, that has had an opportunity to review the draft of the February seventh minutes?
Yes.
Anyone, Peter, have you had a chance to look at that?
I have not.
No, Woody?
Yes, I have.
Okay, Scott? And Mary, have you had a chance to look at? Uh, you're muted, Mary.
Mary? Yes.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Pete, do you have any objection if we go forward with the, with the?
That's perfectly fine.
Thank you. You're obviously free to abstain if you choose to. Um, has, well, I, for those of you who have reviewed it, are there any comments or questions?
None.
I have none.
All right, hearing none. When anyone care to make a motion to approve the draft of the February seventh, twenty twenty four, meeting minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Woody. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Mary. Any further discussion? Then Peter, how do you vote on that?
I'll abstain.
Okay, Woody, how do you vote on that?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. So with the minutes are approved with four yes and one abstention. And we still have three minutes to go before we can get into the public hearings. I don't think there's anything else we have on the agenda that's not a public hearing. Uh, there's no old business and there's no new business, so under those headings in the agenda. So again, we have our several public hearings and we're just going to have to wait till seven fifteen until I can open the first. Amazing how long two or three minutes feels when there's dead silence, isn't it?
One minute.
Yeah, we've got to brush up on our jokes.
Yeah, I, I have no memory for them. I'm afraid I'm gonna have to rely on someone else.
Totality for the solar eclipse is only going to be in the order of three minutes, three minutes plus. So I suspect that'll make time fly, at least for those three minutes.
Yeah, funny how it's relative, isn't it?
Yeah.
Time to get a sub and run back.
Almost, I can't have too much more to go. All right, seven fifteen, so I can open the first of our public hearings. Uh, we have two proposed zoning amendments for the twenty twenty four annual town meeting. Uh, these have been referred back from the Select Board for Public Hearing by the Planning Board and we in turn will report back to the Select Board after our public hearings are concluded. These are for the proposed new MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District and also a proposed amendment to the wireless communications facilities, addition of parcels to the wireless communications tower district. Because these are our first session of the hearings, I'll have to read the legal notice and which was published in the Newbury Report Daily News on February fifth and February twelfth, twenty twenty four. So it's addressed to residents of the town of Newbury and other interested persons. Please note that on Wednesday, February twenty first, twenty twenty four, at seven fifteen PM, the Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing remotely via Zoom, pursuant to general laws, Chapter forty A, Section five, to consider proposed amendments and additions to the code of the town of Newbury, Chapter ninety seven zoning as follows. One, amendment to Article Four, Regulations of Overlay Districts to add a new bylaw, Section ninety seven dash four G, MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District, also MCMOD in parentheses, to allow multifamily housing as of right in this overlay district in accordance with Section three A of the Zoning Act, Mass General Laws, Chapter forty A, and related amendments, uh, and related amendment to Attachment One, Zoning Overlay and Resource Districts Map to show the proposed MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District. Uh, two, amendment to Article Four, Regulations of Overlay Districts, Section ninety seven dash four C, Wireless Communications Facilities, Section ninety seven four C two A Tower Use Restrictions to add parcels to the Wireless Communication Communications Tower District or the WCTD, which enables wireless communication services to operate on tower-mounted facilities and related amendment to Attachment One, Zoning Overlay and Resource Districts Map to show the expanded Wireless Communications Tower District. The text and maps of these proposed amendments are on file with the town clerk and then the planning office, twelve Kentway, Suite one oh one, Byfield, Mass, and may be viewed on the planning board some, on the planning board section of the town's website at https colon backslash backslash www.townofnewbury.org backslash planning colon board backslash pages backslash proposed zoning and regulations amendments. For more information or to obtain a digital or hard copy of the proposed amendments, contact the planning office by phone at nine seven eight four six five zero eight six two, extension three twelve, or by email at planningboard@townofnewbury.org. In accordance with Chapter Two of the Acts of twenty twenty three, which extends the governor's March twelfth, twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty, till March thirty one, twenty twenty five, the hearing is be, being conducted remotely. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the proposed zoning amendments are invited to participate in the hearing remotely at the designated time from their computer, tablet, or smartphone at https colon backslash backslash us zero two uh, wev dot zoom dot us backslash J backslash eight three two seven one four one three zero five six, passcode one zero eight seven nine zero, or by telephone by calling one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine US. Excuse me. And using meeting ID eight three two seven one four nine three, seven one four one three zero five six, or may watch the meeting live on local access cable channel nine or at www.tncTV.org, Lawrence Murphy, Chair, Newbury Planning Board. And as I said, this was published in the Newbury Report Daily News on the fifth and twelfth of February. So.
Thanks, Larry.
So what we'll do is we'll take first the MBTA Communities bylaw. And we have with us Kayla Rennie, I think I are Ian Burns. Are you both here? Thank you.
Both are here.
Wonderful. Kayla and Ian are from Merrimack Valley Planning Commission and have been working very closely with Martha and Kristen on this bylaw. And one or both of them will go, I have a slide presentation for us. Uh, you'll go through the slides and pause periodically at the appropriate time to take questions from board members and the public. Is that my understanding? So then Ian or Kayla, I'll just turn it over to you. And Martha, do you need to screen share with them?
Uh, no, I believe they've got the, they've got the slides.
Okay.
Give me one second to pull this up here. Sorry, one second, trying to get this to present. There we go. All right, um, can everybody see the screen?
Um, I can see it.
Kayla, showing the presenter view, so you might just want to switch your displays. Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, um.
Yep, right there.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you so much, everyone. Um, hi, so my name is Kayla Rennie. I am a Community and Economic Development Planner at MBPC. I'm here to talk to you all today about the MBTA Communities Law, um, some of the requirements for Newbury and what this means for your potential zoning districts. Um, so if we're ready to hop right in, I can dive into the agenda if we're all set.
Yeah, please.
Awesome. So a little bit about what we'll be talking about today. Um, first, we're going to go over a little bit of the background with the MBT Communities Law, talk about the legislation, and we'll be discussing a few of the requirements that are specific to Newbury. Um, we will then pause to take some questions and anything that we can clarify about the legislation and the requirements themselves. Um, then we will dive into talking about some of the proposed zoning districts um, that we have, looking at some of those factors of how we reached a decision to choose those areas. Um, we'll talk a little bit about some of the parameters that we've placed um, in these areas for some of the dimensional parameters. And then we'll also be taking a look as well at some of those maps. Um, we'll also be going over the bylaw, talking about some of the components of that. Um, and we'll be reading through that a little bit with you all as well. Um, and then if anybody has any questions about the agenda, just before we get started here, um, we have a lot to cover tonight, so happy to dive right in.
Okay, any questions from the board members at this point? I don't, I don't think so, Kayla. I guess you can go ahead.
Awesome. So a little background on the MBT Communities Law. This was passed by the Massachusetts Legislature back in twenty twenty one and the law requires what they designate as MBTA Communities, which is any community that either has a commuter rail or a transit stop in their town um, or if they are a community that is adjacent to one that has that transit stop, um, they must zone for multifamily housing. Um, so something to differentiate here right off the bat, this is not a production mandate. The state is not requiring cities or towns to build a certain number of units. We are talking right now just specifically about zoning. Um, and zoning, uh, just for anyone that doesn't know, zoning is really, uh, uh, the simple definition, uh, it's, it's what you can put where. Um, and right now we're talking about zoning or allowing for multifamily housing in these areas. So a few requirements, um, from the statute here. Um, of course, as mentioned, allowing multifamily housing that is permitted by right. Um, so this means not by special permit or another process, but it's allowed as a use in the zoning. Uh, there also can't be any age restrictions or restrictions on bedroom size. It has to be suitable for families potentially. Um, and then there's also a minimum density requirement of fifteen units per acre. Um, and we'll get a little bit more into that later, but uh, there's also a requirement for some communities. Um, if they have a transit stop, they have to zone um, within a certain area around their stations. Um, Newbury is not required to do that, um, because they are considered an adjacent small town. Um, so that doesn't apply to you. Um, however, these are the requirements that specifically apply to Newbury and other similar adjacent small towns. Um, so again, allowing for um, up to that, or I guess that should be the minimum fifteen units an acre. Um, the zoning district must have a capacity for multifamily housing units that's equal to about five percent of your housing stock. So that's how they are able to find that number. Um, and again, some towns are required to zone within specific areas. Newbury is not held to that requirement. You are allowed to zone anywhere in town. However, it is encouraged that, um, it does have reasonable access to a transit station. Um, we'll talk a little bit more later about some of the factors that went into the decision behind um, why we chose some of these areas, um, but just something to keep in mind as we go along here. Um, something to highlight with the timeline with implementation. So the state is requiring that towns, um, specifically adjacent small towns reach compliance by the end of the calendar year of twenty twenty five. Um, Newbury was very proactive here and wanted to get ahead of the curve. So we are actually going to be bringing this bylaw to town meeting in April of twenty twenty four, um, which gives us some, some time and some flexibility there. Um, so we can get that in a little bit before that required deadline. Um, and again, this will be something that is coming up in your upcoming town meeting. Um, so not looking at next year, but, but this year. Um, so talking about compliance, what happens if the town does not vote to pass for this at town meeting? Um, so the state has come down and said, specifically from the Attorney General's Office, um, they've made it very clear that this is a state law um, and they do want to see towns and cities complying. Um, and they've made it clear that they will also pursue legal action against the communities that do not comply. Um, if there, uh, if a community does not reach compliance by the end of that calendar year, so December twenty twenty five, um, your community would then become ineligible for a few grants, which are listed out here. The Housing Choice, Mass Works, Infrastructure and Local Capital Projects Funds. Um, there's also several other grants, um, that you would either become ineligible for or would become less competitive for. Um, there's also a quote there from the state specifically that explains some of their reasoning with this as well. Um, something to mention here, since this has come up in the news a little bit, the town of Milton, uh, as some of you may have seen, uh, they had a citizenry petition to bring this to a vote um, and had a special election and the town ultimately voted down um, the proposed zoning that they were going to pass. Um, with, and the state has actually now come out and said that not only are they going to be ineligible for all the grants listed here, they've made it clear that they've become now less competitive when it comes to other discretionary grants as well. Um, and then there was also an act, a grant that, um, the town had apparently received and the state is now saying that they will not be receiving those funds because they're not in compliance with this law. Um, so just a couple of things there to mention. Um, when we're talking about these grants, you know, we're really thinking about those future projects that you might want to see in town. Um, a lot of them would need to be either fully or partially funded, um, through some of these state grants. So something to keep in mind, um, as we think about voting for this at town meeting. So I'm going to pause here. I know that was kind of a brief overview, but um, I know there have been a lot of questions about this legislation. So definitely want to take a quick pause and, um, see if any folks have any comments or questions about the actual legislation itself.
And, and if I could really quickly, before we hop into questions, pardon me, Mr. Chairman. Um, uh, just to clarify too, as a Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, for folks that may be unfamiliar with us, um, we work for the cities and towns in the Merrimack Valley and we're governed by a board of commissioners. Martha is one of our commissioners and so we work for you all and we did not write the regulations or the law. We are here to help the town find a path to compliance if voters choose to vote for compliance at town meeting. So we just wanted to throw that out there. We're not a state agency that writes regulations, but we are certainly here to help folks understand and unpack what this means for the town. With that being said, happy to go to questions.
Thanks, Ian. Uh, let me turn to the board members for us and see if there are any questions. Peter, do you have anything?
Not at this time. Thanks, Larry.
Just on, on the presentation so far, we'll, there's plenty more to come. Uh, Woody, how about you? Anything?
No, Larry, thank you. I don't have any questions at this time.
Uh, Mary, same question for you. Do you have any questions for them? Or Ian or Kayla? I wonder if Mary is muted again.
No, I'm, I'm sorry. No, um, no questions, Larry. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Uh, and Scott, do you have anything at this point?
No questions, Larry.
And Steve, how about you?
Thank you, no.
No, I don't have any questions, just a comment. No, I don't have any questions. Just a comment, though. Well, I guess it is a question. There are what, a hundred and seventy some odd communities in Massachusetts that are subject to this?
Approximately, yes.
Yeah.
I think it's one seventy-seven.
Out of, what's the total number of municipalities in Massachusetts, three hundred and fifty or so?
Three hundred and fifty-one.
So about, uh, half, half the state and probably all in the east and, uh, end of the state or most of them. Um, Martha, do we have any questions from members of the public, uh, of the presentation so far?
We do. Mary Ann has raised her hand.
Okay, you're, you're muted. Well, there you go.
Hi, I just, I'm just curious.
Where? Can you please state your name and address, full name?
Oh, Mary Ann Regan, Five Adams Lane, um, off of Middle Road. Is, is the planning going to be where G. Mellow used to be if they're going to develop units?
Well, you're, you're getting a, a little bit ahead of the presentation.
I'm ahead of it, okay.
I think you'll have those types of questions answered in, in just a few minutes.
Okay, okay.
Uh, anyone else, uh, Martha?
No, I don't. Oh, Jack or Vicki?
Jack, you're muted. There you go.
There you go. Hi, uh, good evening, Larry. Thank you, Martha. Uh, the funding question, uh, that was just brought up. Uh, Martha and Kristen worked to develop that number. And can you remind people, Martha, please, how much funding was involved in the last ten years?
Uh, sure. Over the last ten years, uh, we've received about one point seven million dollars in state grants.
Over the last ten years?
Over the last ten years, yes.
Okay, so, uh, the impact on Newbury looking forward, or based on the history here and the funding and the grants available to us at this time, and based on history isn't greatly impacted based on that. Thank you for answering that, Martha.
Sure.
Well, I don't know, but maybe this would be a better question for, uh, Kayla or Ian, but I don't know that, um, that the, what's the word I'm looking for? If the penalty would be confined simply to the, to the types of grants that we've received to date, then there might be other funds involved. Is that, uh, the fair statement, Kayla?
Yeah, so there are, um, specific grants that the state has come out and said that communities will strictly become ineligible for if they are not in compliance with this law. Um, they've also listed several other grants, um, that, uh, could take into consideration compliance, um, when they decide to award grants. Um, however, some of the language that they've used around this has been, um, a little vague, um, because i- they really want to see a lot of these towns and cities reach compliance. So it's not, it, it, it wouldn't necessarily be just those, uh, specific grants that are listed. They've said that, uh, this could be taken into consideration, um, with several other things as well, so not necessarily just those grants that are listed. Um, it's really putting the town at risk for, you know, any type of future, um, projects, um, you know, that you'd be working on if, if you would be going after any kind of state grant money. Um, depending on what it is, um, it could be at risk. So just something to keep in mind there. Um, they have listed some specific ones, but they've also said that there are several other discretionary grants where they would take this into consideration. Um, so just something to keep in mind there as well.
What about something like resiliency planning, for example?
And, and, and I
Definitely, so.
Well, sorry, I, I, understanding that impacts for the other ten communities. Have Martha or have, have we tried to anticipate the ambiguous funding that may or not be taken from us that Kayla's speaking of? But that we may have, but I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Yeah.
Happy to speak to that a little bit when we were digging into it with Martha and Kristen and, and the town. Um, to also the chairman's point, there are several programs that the town has received in the past, but also programs the town hasn't accessed in the past, but is considering accessing for future projects. So we took a look at some of the projects that Newbury is anticipating it may want to take on in the next few years, and if those may fall under some of the grant programs that are being threatened here. So that includes, um, MVP preparedness, municipal vulnerability preparedness planning, which are things like resiliency projects. Um, various culvert, bridge, dam, and other small infrastructure projects are things that the town might look to take on in the next few years, but that could be threatened here. Uh, the Board of the Boston Trail, there is some programs that might fall under the threatened grant areas if the town looks to work on the Board of the Boston Trail. And then an update to the town's open space and recreation plan, which is being considered right now, may also fall under the grant programs that are being threatened. So that was just a couple of things that we saw off the bat. The town is considering that, that would fall under some threatened grant programs.
Ian, thank you very much for that. I appreciate it. Uh, 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 I'm good on this point.
Thank you, Jack. Uh, Martha, do we have any other members of the public with questions?
Uh, no, I don't see anyone else.
Okay, thank you. So Kayla, I guess you can continue.
Great. Um, so next thing to hop in here. Um, we are going to be talking a little bit about some of the public engagement that we've done, um, so far throughout this process. Um, a major highlight here is that this is the eleventh time, um, we've been talking about MBTA communities, um, at a public meeting, so apologies if some of this might be a little bit repetitive information for you all, but, um, definitely want to be as thorough as possible here. Um, on December sixth of this previous year, um, we did have a meeting with both the Select Board and the Planning Board. Um, this was really an opportunity for everyone to see these, uh, proposed zoning districts, um, take a look at them and receive some of that feedback. Um, and we, um, were able to adjust, um, some of the districts that we've brought forward based on that feedback, um, which is why we have, um, our proposed districts today. Um, we do have a few other meetings where, uh, there was specific, uh, public feedback that was received. Um, we've had a few housing production plan forums. We also had a, uh, MBTA specific forum back in December. Um, these were great opportunities, uh, for residents to come in, learn about the legislation, learn about the requirements, um, and also provide their thoughts. Um, and we've definitely received some great feedback there. Um, and then we've also, of course, um, talked about this at planning board meetings, um, including, uh, two of these in-person workshops that were done, um, in November and, and January of this year. Um, so we've definitely been trying to get as much information out to the public, um, as much as possible. Um, so whether this is the first time that you're hearing about this, or you've been here for the whole ride, um, we're really excited to, to be bringing this to you all, um, and to be having our, our first public hearing here tonight. Um, so we're going to start going into the actual locations of these proposed zoning districts. Um, but first, I'm going to talk a little bit about how we came to decide on these areas and some of the factors that went into making these decisions. So something that we thought about, um, when we were coming up with these areas is, um, looking at what areas would be ac- um, very accessible for transit. So Newbury Port Commuter Rail specifically, um, we tried to look around that area. Um, again, the way that the law is, you don't have to necessarily pick an area that's near a transit station. Um, but it's something that we thought felt, you know, it, it met the spirit of the law, um, to, um, have that kind of transit and transportation access. So that was definitely a, a major factor that we looked into when it came to choosing these locations. Um, we also looked at areas we thought would benefit from additional, um, walkability, um, and pedestrian connectivity. Um, so something that we took into consideration there. Um, we also looked at some, uh, opportunities to improve the gateway into town. Um, so a few of these areas we felt like would be a really great way for folks coming into town, um, potentially seeing some new, um, development there. Um, of course, looking at some areas that were, um, accessible to town amenities such as the town library, um, post offices, things like that. Um, and then also looking at the potential for future development. Um, we wanted to pick sites that had the potential future, um, uh, sorry, had a, had a potential for that future of development, whether that means in the near future or the far future. Um, we want to take a look at these sites that we felt like could be reasonably developed at, um, at some point. Um, and of course, one of the main reasons that we looked at, at these districts was finding areas that we felt like would be the most successful in addressing Newbury's housing needs. Um, we've talked a lot about, um, some of the needs in the town at previous meetings, um, in housing production plan meetings as well. So that was definitely a major factor, um, that we considered when looking at these districts. So jumping right into the proposed districts that we have, so there are four sub-districts, um, that, uh, we are looking at here. Um, they have a little bit different parameters and requirements based on, um, which part of town that they are in. Um, but the district as a whole is going to be considered as part of one kind of main overlay district. Um, something to mention here, um, if folks aren't familiar with an overlay district, um, when it comes to the zoning, uh, the underlying zoning would still apply in these areas. So if a developer were to come in and they wanted to build something there, um, they could still use the underlying zoning, um, and build something based on those requirements. Um, an overlay simply allows for those additional use options, um, for those sites. Um, so just something to keep in mind there. Um, so out of the four districts that we have, we kind of broke them down based on location. So we have two districts in the north, and we have two districts in the south here. Um, Sub District A is going to be located up near the Newbury Port border on Route One. Um, this is an area we thought was very accessible to transit. Um, and then we also have another sub-district B, um, over on Hanover Street. Um, and again, we will be showing a map of these districts in just a second, but I just want to run through them real quick. We also have two more districts right to the south. Uh, we are looking at the Kentway District, and then we also have a district located on Central Street. Some of the dimensional requirements, uh, between these two districts, they're a little bit different. Um, so they have similar, um, lot sizes. They also have, um, similar, uh, parking requirements, um, but there are a couple differences here, most specifically when we're looking at building height. Um, we have two districts in the north, which is going to be the, um, area around Route One and then, uh, the area down by Kentway. Um, this is going to be your North A and South A districts, so we're going to see a little bit higher building height here at three stories. Um, the setbacks are fifty feet for the front yard, but a little bit less, um, for the side and rear yard compared to the other two districts. Um, and you're going to see a maximum building coverage of fifty percent. So that's, uh, the maximum amount of land the building is actually allowed to cover. Um, and then it does have that minimum open space requirement of forty percent. Um, and then we're also looking at in these North B and South B districts, so this is going to be your Hanover Street and your Central Street districts. We're looking at a little bit smaller building height here at about two point five stories. Um, the setbacks are a little bit higher at sixty feet for the front, front, sorry, for the side and the rear yard. Um, and then we also have a flipped, um, building coverage and open space requirement, so this one's going to require a maximum building coverage of forty percent, um, and then the minimum open space of fifty percent. Now, the reason this was done was, uh, because of the locations of these districts. Um, the North B and South B districts are located in a little bit more residential areas. Um, so we wanted to, um, kind of change some of those dimensional parameters. Um, so they would be a little bit less, you would see a little bit less density, um, in those specific areas, so, um, that's, that's the kind of main difference between these two here. So this is the map of the districts, and we will dive into each of them individually, but just to give a brief, um, overview here of those two districts up in the north and then the two districts down in the south part of town. Um, something to quickly mention here is, as you can see, those Newbury North districts are very close to, um, Route One, the commuter rail. Um, and then the Newbury South districts, um, even though that's not necessarily located near a transit station, um, we still wanted to think about transportation access, um, and having access to ninety-five, um, was really important to look at, so, um, just a little bit more reasoning about why we had chosen those districts there. So this is a little bit more of a close-up into the Newbury North area. Um, so as you can see here, Sub District A, this is our Route One District, um, kind of around that intersection here. Um, and then you can see Sub District B, this is going to be our Hanover Street parcels. So diving right in, uh, Newbury North Sub District A, this is going to be a twenty-two acre district that's near that border to Newbury Port. Um, again, had that access to the commuter rail station. Um, something we also looked at too was, um, the fact that it's close to the Clipper City Rail Trail, um, which allows for additional bike and pedestrian access. Um, it's also a long Route One, as I mentioned, um, so there's additional transportation options there. Um, something that we like to mention as well is that these are smaller parcels, which may allow for more, what we call gentle density. Um, gentle density is a concept that we think about when we're talking about MBT communities. Um, when you look at the size of a parcel, if you were to take, say, instead of having a twenty-two acre district made up of several smaller parcels, if you had one large twenty-two acre parcel, um, you might see, you know, kind of more density and more, um, unit capacity there. Because you just have that one large parcel, um, if someone wanted to develop it, um, they would have, um, a lot more of an ability to versus having these smaller parcels. Um, you know, unless someone were to buy every single one of them and develop them, you might see one site get developed, you might see another site that doesn't get developed at all. Um, it allows for some more control there and some more of that gentle density, um, as you're kind of coming into town here. Um, and there's also, again, potential for additional pedestrian connections, including connections to, um, Newbury Elementary, um, which would be great. And then also, again, um, this is a gateway into town, so there's some potential, um, opportunity for improvement there as well. Looking now at the Newbury North Sub District B area, this is going to be a seventeen acre district located on Hanover Street. Um, again, very walkable to Newbury Elementary, some, um, potential for additional pedestrian access there. Um, very similar to the district we just talked about, you know, near the Newbury Port Commuter Rail Station, it's near Route One. Um, these are some smaller parcels as well. Um, and this is also, um, in a residential neighborhood, but there's also some, some multifamily housing in this area as well. Um, so that's definitely something that was considered as we were going through this. Um, so these are going to be your two Newbury North districts here. Looking towards Newbury South, we have our two districts A and B here, so this is going to be your Kentway parcel and your Central Street parcel as well. Um, and again, you can see with the, with the little car icon there, it's got great access to ninety-five. So Kentway is a ten acre district, um, with some potential, um, um, opportunities for, um, pedestrian improvements, um, some walkability to, um, Byfield Center and also Pearson Plaza, um, which has several community amenities. There's also, again, as I mentioned, great access to ninety-five and, uh, potential connection to the Byfield Water District. Um, so, uh, this is going to be our Sub District A here for the South districts, and then we also have Sub District B. So this is, uh, again, ten acres of land here. Um, there's additional potential for that pedestrian connection, uh, or for biking to, um, Byfield Center or Pearson Plaza. So again, those additional community amenities, um, very similar to Kentway. Again, it has access to ninety-five and that Byfield Water District connection. Um, so this is all our, these are all of our districts that we have here. Um, I'm going to pause, um, to take questions and feedback now, but I am going to probably go back to the slide to show just an overview um, of the map. That way we can all have a good reference, um, to talk about some of these areas, so I will, um, open this up for questions.
Thank you, Kayla. So let's talk, uh, go to the board members first. Uh, Peter, anything?
I'm good right now, Larry. Thank you.
Uh, Woody, do you have any questions, Kayla?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Uh, Mary?
No.
Scott?
I have no questions.
Steve?
No, thank you.
No, I don't, I don't have any questions either, Kayla. Thank you. Uh, Martha, how about members of the public?
Uh, Amy Speake has raised her hand.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, yeah, thank you. Just a quick question on the Newbury South location. Um, I did, I, if I, I missed it, if you said how many units could potentially go there, but have you looked at the, um, potential impact of water usage of those additional homes on the Byfield Water District? And does the water, you know, does the wa- Byfield Water District have the capacity for that much development at once? Just
One of the things that we consider, now I'll let Martha speak maybe to this a little bit more after I do, is that when a development, if a development is potentially proposed, um, as part of the site plan review process, that would be considered is what the water usage would be like on the site. Because this is just zoning at this stage, we can't get a good sense of what exactly water usage would be with the future development until that development is fully proposed. So we usually take that at the site plan review process with the planning board when that happens, as opposed to the current zoning parameters. However, I'm sure that Martha or maybe a member of the planning board could speak to some anticipated water usage and maybe anything about, um, Martha, what you anticipate impacts could be, and if the, the Byfield Water District could handle, um, any future development there.
That's a question certainly any developer is going to be asking the Byfield Water District. Um, if, if, as, as Ian said, if any developer comes in, If, if, as Ian said, if any developer comes in and wants to connect to the Water District, one of the first things that we do is ask them to contact the Water District to see what their capacity is to, to support that development. It's a little bit difficult to say, since we, since we don't have a development proposal for this site. And it's, it's abstract at this moment, it's difficult to say that, that, you know, to, to give any, any specific parameters for that. But that would certainly be one of the requirements. To make sure that's tested and they'll go in and do hydrant flow tests and various other things to determine what the, what the flow is in the location as well as capacity for the system.
Yeah, thanks Martha. It's important to remember, all this we're talking about here now is zoning, we're not talking about building. And whatever the water capacity be, what I, I think would be a very limited, limiting factor for any developer. So because we're zoning for it, doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be built there and, or in particular in that density.
Thanks for those answers, I appreciate it.
Yeah, anyone else, members of the public, Martha?
Not seeing any other raised hands.
Kayla, we'll turn it back to you then.
Great, so just scroll forward a little bit here. So we're going to go over a little bit of the draft bylaw. We're going to talk a little bit about some of the components as part of it. And then I believe Martha will jump in here and then we'll take a look at the draft. So a few things to highlight here, there are a couple of components that we felt were really important to include. So there's an affordability component to this bylaw. Basically requiring that any proposed development over ten units or more. Ten percent of those units must be designated as affordable. There's also a site plan review, of course, would still have to any, any proposed development would still have to go through the site plan review process. And we've also included some general design standards. These are things like, you know, open space and landscaping, some of the building placement. Something, you know, a couple of things to do with the architecture, any pedestrian connections and then some of that resource efficiency. Which, as we've talked about with water and things like that. So these are just a couple of the main components of the bylaw. But we'll definitely be diving into this a little bit more in a few minutes. Just something else I wanted to mention here as well is environmental protections. Because of course, this is a question that comes up very often when we talk about housing. So I wanted to mention that any state or federal laws that have to do with environmental protections will still apply to any prospective multifamily development within these districts. So this could be things like Title V septic requirements, any wetlands protections. Some of that utility and infrastructure capacity, as we just mentioned, when it came to the water, as well as stormwater management. Something to mention here as well, when we're looking at these sites and talking about things like density and unit capacity. It's all very theoretical in the sense that if, if a developer were to come in and actually want to build something on a site, they would have to go through these processes, you know, of site plan review and everything else. It, you know, to, to see what could potentially be built. But things like water and, and septic and all those things, they do constrain what could be potentially built on a site. So that might, that would affect that potentially unit capacity there. So just a few things to mention here as well, that these environmental protections still apply to these areas. So with that, I will pause and let Martha talk about the draft bylaw.
Hey, thank you.
So I think you may need to unshare your screen and I'll share mine. Thank you. Spare with me for a second here. So is everybody able to see this?
Yes.
Great, thanks. I'm just going to enlarge it a little bit. So this is, this is an annotated version of the draft bylaw that was reviewed by the planning board at its January sixteenth meeting and then referred to the select board and reviewed by the select board and, and referred back to the planning board at their January twenty-third meeting, referred back to the planning board for public hearing. So I'm going to go over the different components of it briefly, but also highlight changes that have been made so far to the draft that was reviewed previously. Some of these are based on kind of in-house discussions, most of them clarifications to the language that we had before, but some also are comments from town council, so I will differentiate between those two. And I just want to, I don't want to reiterate what Kayla said before, but just kind of highlight a couple of things that she noted earlier. This is an overlay district, so it's being, being placed on top of the underlying district in, in the areas that we're proposing for these sub-districts, so it doesn't change any of the underlying zoning. It's on top of that zoning and essentially gives property owners additional options for what they could do with their property or if they choose to sell it, what a potential buyer could do with that property. We had a clarification, just references to the, the map. The zoning overlay and resource districts map, our map will need to be updated to include these, this overlay district. Should this be approved at town meeting and some clarification on the map, map name. Then, under definitions, town council added a reference to the definitions in our existing bylaw. So the definitions below refer specifically to this bylaw. But otherwise, if there's nothing else, then the definitions that exist in our bylaw will pertain. She had crossed out the word waiver here. As Kayla noted earlier, this development, multifamily development will be as of right. So it does not require any kind of discretionary permit, like a special permit. It is still subject to site plan review, so there is still an approval process that any multifamily application will need to go through with the planning board. We'll get into that in a little bit. Scrolling down, so these are the definitions. As Kayla noted before, we've got dimensional standards for each of the two. The North and South and the four sub-districts, so A and B are slightly higher density. Or I'm sorry, North A and South A are higher density, sub-districts North B are somewhat lower density. The permitted uses by right of multifamily housing as well as commercial uses that are allowed in the underlying zoning if it's part of this development, which would be allowed. Kayla also mentioned the affordability requirement of ten percent of units for any development of ten units or more. Town council added some language here regarding permit granting authority and their decision. As well as additional references to our site plan review process. So any, any project that comes before the board will need to meet the, the standards of this bylaw as well as the criterion standards that are listed in our site plan review by law. So it'll be a very intertwined process. The next section is the one that we are still working on. We had some comments from town council regarding making sure that the standards that we include are very clear, both for any applicant who is applying for a project and for the board in terms of reviewing a project and rendering a decision. So this, this section is still, yeah, in, in process. And we've got, we had taken out some language here about so being subject to the design standards set forth in the section that, that may be, may be put back. Town council had recommended just changing the language to these required criteria that need to be met. And she has also added a section here regarding waiver. So with these standards, those would be the standards against which an application would be reviewed. But there would, might be some cases where an application, because of the location or something like that, doesn't necessarily, you know, fit into all of these criteria. So the board would have the ability to waive these design criteria in, in appropriate situations. As long as the wording here is, as long as it substantially furthers the purposes and intent of this section. As Kayla noted before, we've got standards regarding open space and lighting, the kinds of activities that are allowed within the open space. One requirement is that the open space will be planned as a single contiguous area. And to the extent practicable, configured continuously with any abutting conservation open areas. The open space intended for public use should have direct access for one or more streets, the pedestrian ways, sidewalks and other public access. Landscape design. And we're also looking for landscaped areas to be planted with drought resistant, drought tolerant native species that don't require regular irrigation. You know, one thing we're really encouraging here is, you know, kind of resiliency and resource efficiency in this development and minimizing impervious surfaces. That's also something else that was added here. Building and structure placement, we made a change to this first one, just to kind of clarify the language. Really requiring a, to make it clear that we're looking for a landscape buffer between buildings or structures on a parcel or within the district and then any adjacent parcels. So that there's, you know, appropriate space, appropriate screening and orientation of the buildings. Making sure that things, things like service areas are minimized in terms of their visual impact. Building massing, articulation and architecture. We talk about reducing the building's perceived mass by changes in plane and color and texture, that kind of thing. We had a, there was a word missing in this B. It was supposed to be multifamily buildings of three stories, having a distinction between the upper and lower floors. Again, just trying to visually break up the mass of the building. Clarifying indeed that it would be both side and rear entrances, it will be consistent with the primary facade's architectural style. And then some clarification of the languages, language about utilities being screened, utility service loading and trash collection areas to be screened. And then some clarification on building materials. It was just to clarify that the materials listed here, including brickstone, wood, clavering, some tushus siding are preferred for the siding, we're not looking for asphalt shingles on the siding. Especially kind of at the pedestrian level, pedestrian street scale. And to avoid manufactured materials to the maximum extent feasible, such as vinyl and plastic. And then architectural asphalt shingles are preferred for the roofing as an addition here. Under pedestrian amenities and connections, we just clarified that brick, brick pavers, not just bricks for walkways or precast pavers or stone or other similar materials. And then we added some language regarding resource efficiency. Applicants are encouraged to use their creativity and experience in the choice of materials and methods of construction to minimize regular maintenance costs and promote energy efficiency. Include building and site designs that increase the owner's energy and water savings and limit the project's environmental impact. And provision shall be that focus on efficient materials and energy and water efficient systems and design shall be preferred, including making sure that the building orientation is appropriate for the use of solar or other renewable energy collection. Drought resistant, drought tolerant landscape design, as we mentioned before. Solar ready and all electric buildings, providing electric vehicle charging stations, LED into dark sky compliant light fixtures and minimizing water demand. And then a section has been added regarding the, from town, by town council regarding the decision-making progress, process. And we just need to clarify and tie that back in with the timeframe of approval from our site plan review. So that talks about determination and what constitutes grounds for disapproval of an application. So those are highlights on kind of what we're looking at and the changes that have been recommended since the initial draft was published. So I think that's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Martha. Let me turn to the board members again. I'm not going to bother polling everyone, but does any of the board members have any questions to Martha? Comments? No? How about members of the public, Martha? Do we have any raised hands?
I'm going to, Pam Wool has a question and I'm going to stop sharing. I can pull it up again if you'd like.
I have two related questions, having to do with affordability. When it said ten percent must be affordable, if they're ten units or more, is there any flexibility to that? Could that be brought down to six units or more or five units or more? Obviously, it wouldn't be ten percent, but it'd be a higher percentage.
Yeah, so I'll hop in and answer this question if that's appropriate.
Please.
Legally, we can go lower. There's nothing that prevents us legally from going lower than that. The challenge that we're trying to anticipate with this is making sure that developers still can economically build a development. Sometimes when we have really small developments of four units or five units, it makes it much less feasible for development to be built that has required affordability, because the developer won't get a return on their investment. And thus, they won't build any units at all. And so we've seen a trend in recent years, I've been watching kind of the research done on affordability requirements to make some higher thresholds to ensure that development happens in the first place. Because what we don't want to do is make such a stringent requirement that somebody wants to build four units. And then they say, oh, but I can't make it work because one is required to be affordable and then they build no units at all. So that's why the threshold's there. Certainly, we can have a further discussion about it, but that's how we ended up at ten is just by looking at current literature during current trends and affordability requirements.
I, I, I am for one, would advocate for a lot of research and discussion around that. You know, even bringing it down to like six or seven. Because we need affordable housing. And then a similar question is, the definition of affordable is a, whatever percentage of the area median income, is there any room to play with that? Or is that mandated, the percentage?
We have limited room to play with that because the state, in terms of M V T communities legislation, we're only allowed to require the affordability to set, to be set at eighty percent of the area median income. If we want to go lower, we have to conduct what's known as an economic feasibility analysis and essentially prove to the state that a lower threshold is economically viable for a developer. We have some communities that are doing that, not necessarily for a lower AMI, but for different inclusionary zoning reasons. And it's been difficult, given the recent, the current costs of construction. It's been hard to economically prove to the state that developers could build it. So in order to keep things safe and, and make it as feasible as possible for us to pass this bylaw, we kept it at the eighty percent that the state is allowing, kind of by right.
Is it, I mean, so for example, I was at the library the other day talking to a full-time employee and she said she was not eligible for affordable housing because her income was too high. Is it possible to have some, to revisit that again, to get more community input on that? At maybe some type of formula where if they're going to be at least twenty units, maybe you know, instead of two affordable units at eighty percent, maybe one of those units could be targeted towards you know, a lower income threshold. So somebody who works full-time for our town could afford to live there?
Yeah, I think the board could certainly discuss that, the town could discuss that as well. We're happy to partner with folks in that discussion to, to plan it out more. And figure out if there's a path forward there, certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Martha, who, who was next?
Jack Rebicki is next.
Jack?
Good evening again. Thank you for the floor and thank you for all your time. We're seeming, we're proposing to bundle a lot of acres at both sides of town in, at fifteen units per acre density in order to achieve a hundred and fifty-four unit build compliance under the provisions of Massachusetts law. I, is that fair so far? Because what I'm asking is, the fifteen units per acre is achievable with a smaller piece of one of the, of the parcels you propose. The 15 units per acre is achievable with a smaller piece of one of the, uh, of the parcels you propose. And I'm wondering. For compliance, uh, using the 15 in one of those areas. And with these great other ideas lessen the density. In those, some of those other parcels, so that the impact. And the fabric of our town cannot be so. By right, not by special permit, but by right developed forever into the future. Whether it's in our future or our children's future. But the amount of acreage with the density possibility makes it very. Uh, uh, very, uh, reflective for many, for many, uh, residents. And I ask, the provisions that you present Martha with the build. Can it be looked at that we can vote? That one area for state compliance to keep us grant compliant. As has been presented as a concern, which the first slide showed 154 units would make us compliant. But by this acreage, we're well over that number in the ideal. And despite the claim that not necessarily will it be achieved that number. Private developers have a way of achieving the maximum at every opportunity. So I think limiting zoning in some of these other areas under the same condition is worthy of discussion. And bundling it all is a monumental commitment forever. Because of the by right notion that doesn't protect us where special permitting. Under the same conditions would. Compliance at 154, the balance of the land should be more reflective. I don't think we should be doing this all at once. That's my point. Thank you.
That's a, that's a really fantastic comment. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
No, you go ahead. Go ahead.
Uh, that's a great point. And I say that's a great point. Because the, the, this, the planning board discussed this at one point in time where we were looking at a lot of land area, to your point. And there was concern about a lot of density in a lot of areas of town. So one of the reasons for splitting it up into that, uh, North A, North B, South A, South B. Is specifically to make sure that there is not that, uh, theoretical 15 units an acre. On every parcel in the proposed overlay district. So as it's proposed right now. Half of the districts, the, the North B and the South B, so the, the Bs. Um, would not be at 15 units an acre. They are actually below that. Um, and so that is ensuring that the density does not get, uh, up to that point where folks may be concerned about having that everywhere in town. So as of right now, we wouldn't be proposing that high of a density in those areas versus, uh, the higher density. Well, higher, so to speak, state compliant density being located in some of the other areas of town, that, that North A and South A. To ensure that we get, um, what is needed for compliance, uh, across the entirety of the districts, but keeping less density in the more residential areas.
But Ian, the words of the ATM. That you just read don't identify those separate densities across those parcels. It just gives the 15 unit across it. You're, you're not saying what's right. We would need that, you would need to articulate that legally. Parcel ABC under North, parcel AB under South and what the specific densities would be. I don't think it's fair for you to say that it's only going to be 10 there because you think it's going to be that. The notion of by right allows the developer to take it to the limit under every condition. Because that term by right, not special permit. And I think the distinction is very much, eh, here in the vote to come and in the words you're presenting. That's my feeling on that.
Yeah, you, you're certainly right. We could certainly add in language that specifies a, a cap on the density in those districts. Um, what we were, the intention in those areas was to limit the heights and increase the setbacks and increase the open space. Thereby preventing a high density. Now, if, uh, throughout these conversations and the point of these public hearings, as the, the board may want to consider putting into that section of the bylaw. Saying that it can only be capped at a certain density to ensure that it's in writing, like you're suggesting, that is definitely something that can be considered.
I appreciate your time on the matter and, and thank you very much for all your yeoman's efforts towards this end. It's an important, it's important going forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jack. Martha, do we have another raised hand, I see?
Uh, yes, we do. Mark Cutter.
Hi, uh, this is Mark and Gail Cutter. Um, and just a simple question. I, I did like what Jack brought up and it, I think it takes some consideration as what maybe would need, not only required in Newbury, but needed. And one of the things I was wondering if the law would allow is for those units to be built as assisted living facility. And then you might be able to get all your compliance done in one facility. Newbury doesn't have it. People who are elderly have to move out of this town. Um, I just wondered if that was a consideration at all by the, the planning board.
Yeah, so I'll have in there, um, we can allow that, but we cannot require it per the state law. And so if a developer comes in and they want to put in an assisted living facility, um, then we could allow that, but we can't say that it has to. Be assisted living or that development has to be 65 or over. Um, we have to allow any type of multi-family development.
Oh, understood. Um, so that's good news because if we think about it, you know, we always have pressure on our schools and so forth. So the more we build with young people coming in, we have to make extra considerations for tho- those things. And so I don't know if what we can do to encourage certain avenues that we go down by this compliance law. But maybe that's something that the planning board can kind of consider and sort of. I know we can't require it, but maybe encourage people to come in for the things we need in Newbury. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you. Okay, um, so. Martha, Kayla, Ian, where, where are we now in this? Uh, what are our next steps?
Actually, we, we have another hand raised, Lynn Marks.
Oh, okay, sorry. Lynn Marks?
And again, we haven't been asking people to provide their addresses, but.
Oh, I'm sorry. That, that's my bad, Martha.
She's, she's muted.
Lynn, you're muted. If you have a question, you have to unmute.
Unmuted. Sorry about that. Um, I'm wondering how many multifamily units?
Before you go on, uh, could we get your name and address, please?
Lynn Marks, three Long Brook Road.
Thank you.
I'm wondering how many multifamily units currently exist in the town?
Um, not very many.
Well, I, I know that, but I was just wondering for a hard number. So do we need to add 154 units or do we need to have that number as a total?
Well, it, it, um. Ian, uh, jump in here if I, or Kayla, but what we have to permit our multifamily housing, meaning more than two units. Uh, which we, which we don't, uh, currently, uh, uh, permit except in, in, um, under special permit in some districts, I believe, Martha. Isn't that the case?
Um, we do. Uh, we allow it, um, by special permit in the Upper Green Business District around the, um, Upper Green. And also in the Byfield Village District. Um, it is also allowed under our OSRD by law, open space residential development. So, um, Caldwell Farm was built as multifamily under that by law.
But it, it's not just a matter of counting, uh, multifamily units. It's a matter of zoning. Uh, for the, uh, multifamily units have to, at the state mandated minimum density. I, I think that's an accurate statement, isn't it?
Yeah, exactly. And so in terms of the, the law itself, we may zone this and if nothing ever gets built, that's completely fine. And so the state doesn't care if the units get built. All it cares is that the zoning exists.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Lynn. So anybody else, Martha?
And Pam has raised her hand again.
Sorry. Thank you. Those are, um, little cottagey type of things like they have in Martha's, um, vineyard. Um, there's an article about those in the Globe recently. They're single houses, but they're very tiny and close together.
Yeah, so those would, uh, unfortunately would not meet the definition of multifamily per this law. However, one of the things that we are discussing is that as a function of the town's housing production plan, which is a separate effort that, uh, you may be aware of. And so we are talking about cottage style developments as a part of a different effort that town is currently undertaking separate from 3A or MBTA communities. Since technically we have to have three units in a structure to be, to constitute multifamily.
Yeah, thank you. Um, let me, uh, um. Let me turn again to the board members. Any, anything further at this point? Any questions?
Sure, Larry, if I could.
Sure.
Yep. First, I want to thank, uh, thank everyone for this very, uh, interesting and helpful, uh, presentation with questions. You know, it's wonderful to have the community participation and this is what this board is looking for at this point. Now, as was indicated, we've been discussing this, uh, this concept for quite some time. And the bylaw that is proposed is a reflection of that. And you can see in the content of the bylaw, there's an intent to try to control what might potentially develop if it were to develop. We're not proposing development. We're proposing zoning to allow for it. And we're trying to stay ahead of the curve by saying what we would like as a community to be reflective of, of that process. So that's what, uh, you know, a, 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 a good component will be worked on, the fine tuning as we, uh, before we bring this, uh, uh, before the. Uh, the town, town meeting for a vote. Uh, but again, this is to stay ahead of the curves. This is so the state won't tell us what to do. We will have the ability to control what we want to do and how we as a community elect to do that. Uh, you know, uh, this, this allows for continued discussion and the planning board. Uh, and I know MBPC is very, very appreciative of that. So that's what I'd like to say. Thanks, Larry.
Thanks, Peter. Anyone else, board members? Uh, Martha, I neglected to ask, uh, earlier, have you had any written submissions and comments?
Yes, we've gotten, um, three. Three emails over the past couple of days regarding this. I can either read them or I can note the, uh, note the names and addresses, whichever you would prefer.
If they're not too long, you can just read them.
Yep, they're relatively short. Uh, so the first one is from Paul and Melissa Goldner, 19 Pearson Drive. Uh, hello, we are writing in support of multifamily housing being created in Newbury in accordance with the new MBTA zoning laws. With consideration being given to future environmental impacts and a regenerative future. Where all people can afford homes while providing our, sorry, while preserving our wetlands and coastlines. Uh, the second one is from Fred Thurlow on Marsh Ave. Um, here are my comments. We aren't building anything, just zoning to allow with no sewer. Water and a lot of wetlands within the half mile from the station. Not much is going to happen. With regard to word wording, our bylaws are full of excess verbiage and this proposal is no different. Remove all references to the MBTA and just allow multifamily and include the dimensional requirements that the T wants. Um, he also commented that he, he would, uh, prefer to have these meetings, um, in person rather than in Zoom.
Okay, thank you, Martha.
And the third one is from Dan and Carol Valianti at 233 High Road. And Dan writes, I hope to be able to join the meeting tonight by Zoom, but I wanted to register my strong support for whatever zoning changes are required. To be in compliance with the MBTA's multifamily housing segments. Newbury needs to get serious about meeting our obligations to be able to build housing of all kinds, including low and moderate income housing 40B. And to look at zoning in general. And of course, in general, the best place for this new development is around the train station. I was deeply saddened a few years ago when essentially two families were able to veto a project that was proposed for this train station. It was indeed a huge lost opportunity for the town. I have noticed that most of the development around the train station since has been in Newbury port. Again, lost opportunities for Newbury. I'm happy to assist or provide more input, but I vote yes, we should make sure we are in compliance with MBTA on multifamily housing zoning around the train station. And thank you for all your work on behalf of the town. Um, there is a PS here, but it's regarding, uh, solar. So I'm not sure. I don't think it's really. Relevant to this topic.
That's fine, Martha. Thank you. So Martha, it, um. I, it sounds like we still have some work to do, particularly in sections eight and nine. Uh, town council has not vetted this, uh, this most recent draft, has she?
Um, she's vetted the one that we went through tonight. The, a lot of these comments were hers, but anything going forward, she would obviously need to, need to review.
Yeah. Um, so I, well, I guess where I'm getting at is I don't think we're in a, in a position tonight to take a vote on this, to send it back to the selectmen, are we?
No, I think based on, on her guidance and also the comments that we've received, um, there's certainly more. More work to be done, as you said, especially on those sections eight and nine.
Yeah, and we'll certainly continue to, to seek public comment on this as well. Uh, now we're also something under the gun time wise though, are we not?
The, uh, my understanding is that the select board and the finance committee are reviewing the draft warrant on March 12th. So the, the goal would be to have our, the final recommendation for the wording of the bylaw. Uh, to them by that date. Um, and again, we've been advised by town council that this, the changes that have been made to that. Um, draft that was originally presented for review when the, when the bylaw, um, when the zoning amendment, public hearing was. Uh, advertised, they're substantive. So we would be looking at, at renoticing when we have that language, renoticing the public hearing. But that could be after, that could be afterwards. After the.
Could be after what? I'm sorry.
After the, after the 12th.
Okay. So, uh, I'm, I'm just trying to get a handle on where we are. Our next regular meeting is on March 6th. Do we need something? Uh, can, can we wait to look at another version of this, uh, until March 6th? Or, or do we need to get together sooner to, to look at something?
Yeah, I mean, it seems that if, um, if the board wants to really have an opportunity to discuss. Some of the, the concerns and questions that were brought up tonight, as well as dive more deeply into those sections eight and nine, that an interim. Interim meeting would be helpful.
Okay, uh, so a, a continued public hearing then, or, or some sort of workshop?
And I think if they were to be continued opportunity for public, um, public input, doing it as a public hearing. Which could basically be run as a workshop, but allow for the public input might, might be an appropriate way to go, but.
Okay, that, that seems to make sense. I mean, uh, so basically we would be talking about perhaps a special meeting next week?
Yes.
Yeah, let, let me ask the board members, is that something, is that convenient, is that doable, Peter?
Yep, that'd be fine. Workshop would be a great idea. Thanks.
Yeah, okay. Again, as Martha suggested, we'll notice it as a continued public hearing, but with, so we can get community input. Um, Woody, you, you, uh, open to that?
Yes, I'm in agreement. Yes, sounds good.
Mary, how about you? And, uh, Scott?
Yes.
That work for you and Steve?
Yes, so I've got one commitment on Tuesday, which I can't change.
Okay, uh, did you have any suggestion then for a date, Martha?
Um, possibly a week from today, the 28th.
Do you want to do it, uh, uh, at night via Zoom or, uh? Or in person?
I think that's really up to the board. I, I would say for a lot of people, if they're working, um. For the public, evening meeting might be easier. And to do it, we've got quite a participation tonight. We've, you know, currently got 39 people in our meeting.
Oh, that's great. That's great. Yeah, so, um. Uh, Peter, do you have any preference? Oh, you're away, so I guess, uh, you would, well, you could remote participate.
Right, right.
Yeah. And do you have any preference then as to whether or not we do, would be a Zoom or in person?
Uh, I am flexible. I, I will be zooming in either way.
Okay, uh, Woody, how about you?
I, the, I'm, I'm more for an evening meeting, obviously, which we're discussing, uh.
Yeah, no, I think we're talking in the evening meeting, yeah, but.
Yeah, so, I mean, an evening meeting would be great. It doesn't matter whether it's Zoom or in person.
Uh, Mary, how about you?
Um, whatever. I mean, I'm, I'm flexible with that way, so.
Uh, Scott, do you have any preference, uh?
Yeah.
Next Wednesday night, either, uh, Zoom or in person?
Yeah, Larry, I'm, I'm sorry, just check my calendar. I'm, I'm away Wednesday, uh, Thursday and Friday of next week.
Uh, okay.
It, Scott, if you're away, would you be able to participate by Zoom or is that not possible? Scott, if you're away, would you be able to participate by Zoom, or is that not possible?
Um I could participate on Zoom. I'm sure nobody wants to do this on Friday, uh but uh I could do it on Friday or Monday or Tuesday, but Wednesday and Thursday I couldn't.
Uh and Steve, do you have a preference, in person or Zoom?
I could do either, uh.
Yeah. Well, it sounds like if we have two members who are going to have to participate remotely anyway, Martha, maybe Zoom. I I thought when we had our last workshop on it in person, it was very helpful. It was nice to be able to sit around a table and just share ideas, but with two members away, um I don't know. What do you think, Martha?
Um I think, you know, again, also, it wouldn't be quite unless unless nobody comes, it wouldn't be quite that format of um if we're looking for public participation. So and I agree, the workshops where we've sat around the table have been tremendously productive, but I was just checking the uh the town's calendar. It doesn't look like there's anything scheduled for the hearing room that night. Uh there is a select board meeting on Tuesday, the twenty-seventh.
Well, I guess it's up to me to make the decision. Why don't we plan on doing it by Zoom? And we've got, as you said, we've got thirty-nine participants. I don't know that it would necessarily be convenient for everyone to get to the uh to town hall uh next Wednesday night, all the interested parties. Make sense?
Yep, makes perfect.
Okay, um I'm gonna hold off then and since we we noticed both this public hearing and that the wireless communications public hearing on the same meeting notice, I'm gonna hold off asking for a motion to continue the public hearing on the uh MBTA communities, and we'll take them both at at the uh afterward done with our discussion on the wireless uh bylaw. So uh before I move on to the wireless, I'll ask one more time, does anyone have any any further comments or questions on the MBTA bylaw at this point?
Okay, and I think Kayla had one more slide, if you want to put
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Kayla.
All right, let me just pull this up really quick. Um All right, one second here. Um just a couple of next steps. Um we just wanted to highlight here for folks, um just to know what we'll be doing in the upcoming weeks and leading up to town meeting. So of course, um still will be continuing to receive uh community feedback. Um of course, through hearings like this. Um and if anybody has additional comments uh to submit, um you can also reach um the town's website that's posted here. So the planning board site. Um we also do have that QR code if folks can see um. And that uh will scan to uh Newbury's um MBTA communities page um to learn more about that there. Um and again, this will be a bylaw that's considered at town meeting um this year, so in April, on the April thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. Um so if anybody is looking for that additional information, there's definitely several sources there for that.
Thank you all for having us here today. We appreciate the opportunity.
Well, thanks very much. We appreciate all your efforts. You've been
Thanks, you guys.
Been terrific. Okay, uh I think we can move on to the wireless bylaw, Martha. And I think Kristen, you have some slides for us?
I do. See if I can do this. I haven't done that in a while.
If you get stuck, I've got it here.
Say, I'm not seeing it showing up on my choices, so would you, Martha, would you just run it and I'll I'll do the talking?
Sure.
Thank you.
Welcome. So is everybody able to see that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, unfortunately for how to get rid of the uh notes over on the left-hand side, so.
Can you just do it as a slideshow?
I tried that before and it didn't uh
From beginning.
There it goes. Okay, thank you.
Oh, great. Thanks so much, Martha. Um Hi, everybody. Kristen Grubbs, Assistant Planner. Um Larry, is this, do you need to read the legal notice for for this, or it's
I already
read the whole thing?
I read, yeah, I read them both.
Okay, great. Um So the other zoning amendment that is being proposed for um April thirtieth town meeting, it relates to the wireless communications um zoning district. So another conversation about zoning certain parcels to meet certain uses to to allow for certain uses. Um so I just have five or six slides. This is pretty straightforward, but just wanted to give a little history. Um I haven't been around for some of the history, so please, Martha and board members who've been involved in this longer than I am you know, chime in. Um so the current zoning bylaw is uh for the wireless section is chapter ninety-seven, article four um C, so it's one of the overlay districts. And the purpose of this is to establish regulations for the placement, construction and modification of wireless communication facilities through which wireless communication services may be provided while preserving and protecting the public health, safety and general welfare. So um I wanted to start with this, just to explain, you know, this is the overall purpose of zoning is to help a community um protect these kinds of public um benefits, public health, safety and general welfare. The regulations associated with this particular section of the bylaw specify these six um particular purposes. So protecting the general public from any hazards associated with um wireless communication facilities to minimize visual impacts from the facilities, to protect the scenic, historic, natural and human-made resources of the town, to protect property values, to enable the provision of wireless services in a manner consistent with federal law. There's a lot of federal law around communication facilities. Um it's a pretty complicated um thing to navigate. So the town has done a great job assuring that what we have is consistent with what the federal law requires. Um and finally, to enable the town to enjoy the benefits of an effective wireless communications infrastructure. So providing the ability for all of us to use our cell phones essentially in a way that you know, our society and our community really relies on um currently. So the bylaw was originally passed in two thousand and one, the first version of the wireless overlay district bylaw. And it's been amended several times, um most recently in twenty twenty-two. Um as technology has changed, we've been keeping up with changes. Go to the next slide. Thank you. I'm sorry, I do not be doing that myself. Um so currently, the parcels which are included in the wireless overlay district are this purple pink area here. It's essentially the northern portion of town along Route One from the Newbury Port border um and extends down to Boston Road. So again, similar to the last discussion, there are other uses that are allowed in this district. It's a mix of residential, business, industrial uses, um agricultural uses. But it also allows an over this overlay, which is um to allow a wireless communication tower on one of these parcels according to the permitting process that's laid out in the bylaw. Next slide. So again, as technologies change, um in recent years, um we are catching up. So in two thousand and twenty, the town engaged consultants to help with this process. Um David Maxson was a consultant from this company, Isotrop. Um so he was contracted by the town to analyze um the current wireless coverage across the town. So you know, this was done by driving all the roads of town and assessing um current coverage. Um he reviewed the town's um existing bylaw at the time. Um again, in relation to changes in technology and communications regulations, and then presented a report that included recommendations um about um updating provisions of the bylaw to address things like small wireless facilities, um modifications to facility requests and just the general permitting processes around approving new towers. So in two thousand and twenty-two, um at annual town meeting, voters approved replacing the existing communications district bylaw as it had been written previously with a new updated bylaw, which was titled the Wireless Communications Facilities. Um and that's what we currently have as part of our town zoning bylaw. Um in addition, his analysis at in those years in two thousand and twenty documented um acutely what was already known you know, locally and anecdotally that there many or several areas of of Newbury that are really underserved by wireless service. Um again, you all probably can attest to that more than I, but I've certainly been driving on Route One A when, you know, my service goes out and I know some of our board members and other committee members who have to go out in their yard to get a service. There there are several areas in town where um we have known that they are underserved by a current service. Um so in particular, this has been continued to be discussed, not only by planning board, but other um town departments as a real concern for public safety. Uh because we rely so heavily on this kind of communication ability, um we you know, the town wanted to address this. So um this report uh was included recommendations for how to achieve better coverage in these underserved portions of the community. So um you know, we can provide the whole report to people um to review, certainly. I just wanted to um look a little bit closely at one of the slides where the two publicly owned properties that we're discussing in this zoning amendment um were identified. Um so as you can see, the Triton and DPW Barn are on opposite sides of the town. The Triton site um was identified in order to address um some of the coverage problems in the Byfield, you know, west of Route One in the Byfield area. Um across the marsh extending to Orchard Street. Um and then over on the other side of town, DPW Barn is located on High Road. Um and it is at a higher point being on High Road, so it it stands and addresses some of the coverage areas out towards the coast and then south down to the Parker River area where there are some other problems with coverage. So just again, looking at these parcels a little more closely, again, they were identified because they're public publicly owned parcels. Um DPW Barn at one ninety-seven High Road is owned by the town. Currently has the um highway facilities and and DPW office um located right at the corner of Old Pine Island Road. And then um Triton, I think we probably um let me go to the next one. Nowhere, the school, middle high school owns not just the parcel um that extends to the river and the marsh that has the school, but they also own a parcel across Elm Street on the corner there that currently um is forested and wetlands and um has their septic system. Um So when the planning board um picked this project up again in two thousand and twenty-three, the first conversation um was with Triton. Um so Martha and I met with Brian Forget, Superintendent, to explain why the school parcels were had been identified as potential places to have um to be included into the wireless district. Um Superintendent Forget spoke with the school committee and we had some back and forth and they uh school committee voted to approve that these um uh parcels could be presented to the town to consider um including in the district. Um just wanted to read, I'm sure that's too small for everyone to read, so I just wanted to say this was part of the letter that says, um we understand that being included in the wireless overlay district does not guarantee any interest from cellphone providers to enter into a contract for the placement of a tower, nor does it require the school committee to enter into such a contract if the interest does indeed indeed materialize. This approval simply allows Triton's properties to be considered as potential locations for an additional tower. So I just wanted to read that because I think it really summarizes what we're talking about here. Um we do not know yet. We don't have any um providers waiting in the wings, but um including these parcels in a district would signal that we are looking for help to solve this public safety concern for the community um and sort of inviting uh telephone cell service providers to consider um bringing services to Newbury. I think there's, did I do one more slide?
Let me, yep.
Okay, so this is just the language of um the proposal to see if the town will vote to amend the code of the Town of Newbury, Chapter ninety-seven zoning, Article Four, Regulations of Overlay Districts, um to modify the boundaries of the wireless communications tower district by adding one ninety-seven High Road and one forty-five and one twelve Elm Street parcels to the wireless tower district.
Hey, thank you, Kristen.
Yep.
Um let me turn to the board members. Do any of the board members have any questions for Kristen or Martha or me for that? No, here none? Oh, I'm sorry. Is that Woody?
It correct me if I'm wrong, Martha or Kristen. There is language too for the uh pole-mounted uh apparatus that they put on the poles for from Ireland, too, right?
Uh there's language in the, excuse me, in the bylaw, sorry, regarding small cell facilities, if that's what you're referring to.
Yes, because the the beach is also a a place that wasn't getting a lot of service for public safety with my, I just want to make sure it was still in there.
Yes, yeah, yes, it is.
Thank you.
Uh anyone else from the board? Okay, we have any members of the public, Martha? I see one hand.
Yes, Amy speak, and then um shall I stop sharing here?
Uh yeah, you can probably do that. Amy, again, if you could give us your name and address for the record?
Sure, and thank you for taking my questions. Um I have a lot of questions about this. Um so um I'm gonna rattle them all off and then let you address the ones that you want to start with. Um first, you know, as in a butter, I have not gotten a letter um about this. And my question first is, you know, why not? This is a public hearing. My understanding is that, you know, we were all supposed to be notified about this public hearing, and luckily, one of my neighbors saw it. Um second, my question, you know, I'm I'm particularly concerned about not the main um Triton property. I think that's an ideal location, given that it's already kind of in the public domain for a cell tower, but I'm very concerned about the other property on Elm Street. I don't know if any of you have actually been on that property uh recently, but in the last couple of years, it has become more and more saturated. Um it is, I would say, virtually ninety percent wetlands at this point. It is a catchment area for I can't even begin to describe the amount of water that runs through there. Uh it comes from Rowley down the hill. It goes through the back there. And anything that could impede the water flow there could um pose a massive problem for the residents in this neighborhood. Um so I just want to say that there's also a huge amount of um wildlife back there. In addition, you know, when it comes to cell towers, and I know this sounds completely like NIMBY, but I'll go there anyway. You know, it, they've been shown to decrease property values in residential neighborhoods and, you know, many of us moved here specifically because of the zoning. And I guess my questions for you are, you know, what other parcels have you considered? Have you considered the, you know, the environmental impact? You know, what, are you aware that once you kind of, you know, once if the town decides to contract out to a communication. Company, they can increase the height of any sort of towers that they've erected by twenty feet without having to get any community involvement. And I just think that this, you know, even allowing the zoning in such a residential quiet neighborhood. You know, would likely be a mistake. I think we've got Mantra Field, we've got Triton, we've got. The fire department, many places that are already being used for public benefit. That, you know, I think would be a better consideration, but again, back to the water issue. I don't know if any, if any have been back there lately, but. You know, and I know what the map says, but I will tell you that it is probably upwards of ninety percent. Completely saturated at this point, so anything that. Changes the water flow back there. Could create some really, really big problems, so I I think I'll leave it there. I would also just mention that, you know, while we have thirty-some odd people on here. For the open hearing tonight, I would say, you know, the vast majority of us are abutters and in the neighborhood and and, you know, want to talk about this further.
Thank you. You want me to try and answer some of those or Martha, or you want to take a shot at it?
Well, I can answer the question about why there was no notification, if that would be helpful. So again, this is, this is just, it's a zoning proposal, so under under Mass General Law has a zoning proposal. Butter notification isn't required. If this were a. A proposal, an actual proposal from a provider to put a tower there, then yes, absolutely, all the abutters and abutters to abutters within. Three hundred feet would be notified and there would be a special permit process. But as a zoning amendment, which is going before town meeting, it's it's not treated the same way as an application for an actual tower would be. So I hope that helps answer your question.
I mean, a- as far as as choice of the location, that really came from the board's consultant. And, you know, to 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 help fill the the coverage gaps in certain areas of town. You may be perfectly right about that one parcel. It may not be buildable and there's no guarantee that it that it. That it will be, or there's no certainty that that the school board would 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 want to do it. It's, but it is, you know, we felt we hadn't, speaking for myself anyway, we felt we had an obligation to at least identify. Those parcels that could provide enhanced cell service because it is, as Kristen said. A very real of public safety concern. I hope that answers your questions. I don't.
Well, I guess my other question is what other parcels were considered? You know, you've got, like I said, you've got the fire department, yeah.
These were the only parcels that were identified by the consultant.
I'm curious about that because there, yeah, I mean, maybe just like I'll put it out there. There are a lot of other places in town where. We've got the fire, you know, the fire station, we got the, you know, the top of the water tower, we've got the school already. You know, there are lots of Mantra Field, you know, which has already been, you know, kind of. Used by the town. Anyway, so just throwing that out there. I don't know, you know, if you guys talked about anything else, any other locations.
And I think.
That's what we hired the consultant for.
Yeah, he based his recommendations on the areas that he thought would provide the most extensive improvement in coverage. So.
Okay, I think we have some other hands, Martha.
We do, Tom, I'm sorry if I say this wrong, Tom Marlon.
Yes, Tom Marlon.
We could have your name and address, please, for the record.
Sure, my name's Tom Marlon. I live at one twenty-seven Elm Street. My property abuts the back of the Triton parcel of land that Amy just spoke about with the wetlands. And I mean, part of the reason that we bought the property that we have is because we wanted to live in a less residential area. We wanted to live in. Something that had a bit more of a country feel, so we moved from Edford to Byfield. I'm familiar with a lot of land because I periodically walk out on that lot as Amy speak identified. There is a. Very large kind of body of water in the middle. I guess my concern would be. Based on what I know of that lot, because again, I've walked it and I'm looking at the map here. The water really dissects that parcel. So i- in my estimation, I'm not an engineer, but it would seem to me that they would need to put it. On either side of the water. On one side, if you're looking at the map. And where that parcel abuts the properties all along Elm Street. There's significant amounts of rock and ledge up in there, massive, massive boulders. I don't really know how realistic. Realistically, somebody could put a tower there just based on kind of the geography. I can't speak to the left side of where the body of water is. I don't know how rocky it is over there. I guess I'm just thinking about the size of a tower. If a tower is, and we've got some pretty large trees out back. A two, I mean, are we talking a two hundred foot tower, a hundred foot tower, a fifty foot tower? I guess. My concern is when I look at the map and I look at the number of properties that abut. The potential location. I do think that there would be a negative impact and I'm just thinking back to one of the first slides from Kristen's presentation. Which talked about property values. I mean, certainly, we want people to have access to good communication systems so that they're safe. But part of the consideration also needs to be. When I look, there are lots of properties that surround that that I think potentially would be impacted. I'd be wondering if a tower were to be put in, would they need to do some type of blasting to get in through any of the ledge and rock? As I noted, right behind my house, it's pretty significant. So I guess, do we, do we have any idea of if a tower were to be erected on that property? What would be the size of a tower? Would it be? A hundred?
Well, first of all, it would be monopole construction, one thing, but is it eighty feet, Martha?
It's sixty-five, sixty-five feet under our bylaw.
Okay, I guess I would, I would probably have to say that I'd like to go on record to have some of the same concerns that Amy had and. I would be interested. If we're considering something in this area, are there more suitable areas that would have less of an impact on? People who are current property owners that would afford people still good self cell service and cell coverage.
Hey, thank you.
You're welcome.
We have another hand, Martha.
Uh, yes, Mark Davidson.
And Mark, if you could give us your name and address, please.
My Mark Davidson, I live on twenty-one Brick Road. Byfield Mass, so I but the land too. And a couple of things, you know, that I want to highlight is one, you know, understanding. I guess there is some concern of life safety, but I'm not sure. What every, how, what the magnitude of those issues are, why we need more towers and stuff like that. But I look at this parcel because I abut it and Amy and myself and other neighbors have had to go out. And clear trees out of, out of the stream because of how much water accumulates there. This parcel right now, you guys said is used for forestry. The town septic system and as, and as you know, wetlands. So what I don't get is. You know, you read so much in the news today about wildfires starting in forests where there's a lot of dead trees all over this place. That could have a real life safety issue. Two, it's near the school's school. I don't even know where the access could be. For this, right? And there are kids waiting for school buses. Walking all the time and, you know, you could have a lot more traffic depending on where the access is. And I would request if we're going to ask for a zoning that allows NAS of right. Right here again, that we talked about in the last one. There's no definition of restrictions, proximity to houses. And so how do you ask the town to approve something where the last one we went on really small parcels? Had such definitions and restrictions and here it's just wide open. It's whatever, you know, the town wants, so. How was we as abutters not challenged this because there's no definition there?
Well. All right, I'll start, Mark, with that by saying I should have made very clear this is requires a special permit. So any proposal that comes forward, so this is not by right. So it's, it's different from the last conversation and I apologize. I didn't make that more clear.
Thank you.
But I am worried about, because like I said, I'm in real estate. And there are areas. Of the country where people can't get home insurance because of certain risks. And if you have multiple towers here, that could actually could cause. A wildfire. I'm not sure we're not creating a bigger, one, an issue for abutters that. Further devalues your property because it could make it really difficult to get insurance. And then two, as I said, is it just feels like if we're really trying to solve life state, safety issues. Putting towers in the middle of forest land seems like. A crazy idea and it sounds like the consultant really picked this site because it was publicly owned land. That's, you know, the two parcels that have been selected. You know, I didn't hear anything about the selection of the parcels. How, how this is where all of the real self service shortfalls are that we need to protect life safety. But I heard you guys say is they were selected because they're publicly owned.
All right, thank you, Mark. Do we have any other comments, Martha?
Mary Anastasio.
Mary, if you could give us your name and address, please. You're muted. Mary, are you there? Mary Anastasio? Well. Mary, we can't hear you, so if you want to try again, I think we have another hand up. Martha?
Uh, Mark Davidson has his hand up and then Courtney Carroll.
Mark Davidson just spoke.
Okay. I accidentally raised it when I tried to put it on mute. Sorry about that.
All right, Courtney.
All right, Courtney, go ahead. Your name and address, please.
My name is Courtney Carroll. I live at six A Fraser Lane. So just off Elm. And I agree with a lot of the people, a lot of what the abutters were saying about the parcel and. The water and everything, but I just wanted to also bring up. I know there's not a lot of proof about cell phone towers and their harmful effects, but they do give off radiation and I just feel like. Them being by a school. Could, oh, sorry, that's my daughter. So that eventually those could raise some concerns as well, so I just definitely wanted to put that out there. As, you know, with the middle school and high school there, so. That's about it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else, Martha?
So Mark has his hand up again. Did you want to speak again, Mark?
I don't know what's going on. It's. Sorry about that.
All right, thank you.
I'll lower your hand again.
Well, I I I emphasize there are no, no plans currently underway to to build a tower on any of these proposed locations. They've simply been identified as. Spots where towers could potentially improve the cell. Cell phone service in certain parts of town. The way everybody describes the one off Elm Street, it doesn't sound like a very promising site, I have to say, in terms of the practical. Problems with with building a tower, but I just want to emphasize that the town or the school district would have complete control over this. Again, there are no, no plans to to erect a pole at this point. And that's not to say that they wouldn't be in the future, but currently there's nothing proposed. Let me go unless there is some other members of the public who have any comments, I'll go back to the board members. Excuse me and ask, do any of the board members have any further comments? No, hearing none.
The chair, Amy speak, has her hand raised again.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Amy.
Yeah, thanks. I just, I really just feel like I have to voice this, like I cannot voice this strongly enough. I think that. That parcel and it's, and it's not just because it's my backyard, but it's. It's really not a good place and I don't even think it, I I. I would strongly request that the planning board consider some other properties. And, you know, the, I don't know if the consultant walked around there. I don't know if the consultant, you know, I can't imagine that there aren't other. Parcels that would be suitable. And my concern is that this, you know, if we don't consider. Other places that once this gets voted and somebody like Verizon comes in and puts a proposal in front of the town. And, you know, and says, oh, it'll be great. It'll be fine. We'll take care of the wetlands. You know, it's a Pandora's box that cannot be pulled back. I just can't imagine there aren't better places, given the circumstances of what's back there and I would encourage you to walk around back there and have a look for yourself. So it's. The amount, I cannot understate the amount of water that runs through there. And and the challenges it could create for all of us upstream as well, well into Rowley, so. And and I guess with that, my question is, what are the, you know, what are the next steps? I mean, have any of you, I guess, you know, I'll ask you, has anybody been back there? Has anybody actually looked at this parcel? Because I I don't think it should come to a vote that bad.
Thank you, Amy. But, you know, we're not engineers and quite frankly. We're just going on the advice of our consultant that these are suitable locations. Now, whether as a practical matter, you can be built back there. Frankly, from what we've heard tonight, it sounds like maybe not, but. I don't know, I'm not in a position to answer that.
Well, I guess my question is, can we determine that before we vote to make this a part of the overlay? District.
Not, not to make it for this year's town meeting, no.
Well, then maybe we shouldn't rush it. I'm telling you, it's a bad place for it.
I, I, we appreciate your comments. I, I hear where you're coming from. Like, you have my, I understand, I really do. We have one more comment from Mary Anastasio.
Sorry about that. Get it off mute and I.
If we could have your, if we could have your name and address, please.
Sorry, no problem. Mary Anastasio seventeen Long Brook Road. So obviously I'm a neighbor as well on the Long Brook side, not a direct abutter, but I I do have two questions. One of the questions was if it's identified. On the town bylaw as a location you made mention that doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to build. However, if it's not something that's okay to build, why mention it? In the bylaw, I guess that's kind of an open ended question. And the other question that I had was the locations north of Parker River for the, I'm thinking that that's the area for the beach. It didn't seem to. From what I saw expressly call out. A defined area for for that location. So I did want to just kind of ask those two questions. And then the other comment is regarding the property values around having cell towers. There's a defined decrease in that and as my neighbor on the other side on Elm Street had priorly mentioned that. This area is a residential agricultural area and that's one of the reasons why we all moved to this town, myself included, obviously. I did not grow up here. I moved here and afforded my son a place to grow up that he could ride his bike and and go through those woods. So I do want to also call that out. So that's, those are kind of my questions. Questions on why it needs to be identified. On the bylaw is one, and then of course, I'm obviously opposed to this particular parcel. So I'll just leave it. So I'll just leave it there. Thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any further members of the public, Martha?
No, I'm not seeing any.
Well, my suggestion then at this point, again, I'll turn to the board members one last time. Anything from the board members? No.
If I may, we do have one written comment.
Okay, oh, please go ahead.
All right. Um, this was from Richard and Paula Piccolo. Um, and this came in uh on Saturday the seventeenth. We are concerned about and there at ninety-two Caldwell Farm Road. We are concerned about the proposed by law amendment permitting wireless towers adjacent to Elm Street. This does not appear to be a suitable area for a tower as there is a stream, wetlands and wildlife in this area that would be disrupted by a paved road for maintenance. We're also concerned about the abutting neighbors having the tower within their sight line. Is there an alternate location in a less rural parcel of land such as Route one or adjacent to Route ninety-five?
Yeah, thanks, Martha. Well, just I think for the board members, we're not going to close this out tonight, obviously. And it's something for the board members to think about and you know, the uh the DPW uh property um up on High Road again is town owned. Uh, the two parcels off of Elm that um um are are owned by the school district. The the concerns we've heard tonight are about the parcel on what I guess would be the southerly side of Elm. And I I just want to bear in mind that the entire campus is included. Uh, you know, in the proposed uh overlay district. So I think for what the as the board members need to think about is whether or not we do need to include that piece or that piece on the southerly side of Elm. From everything we've heard, it doesn't sound like an ideal site in any event. Uh, although I'm not an engineer and certainly can't speak to that. But my suggestion, Martha, is that we just continue both of these hearings until uh until next Wednesday. I don't think you want to separate them, do you?
No, no, they were advertised together. So I think we need to.
Yeah. Okay.
Has one hearing.
Um, and the uh it's um the folks who have spoken have given us a lot to think about, especially in that one parcel. And um and maybe we can find some time to discuss that. Well, we will all find some time to discuss that next Wednesday as well.
Could I make one, just one quick comment, just?
Of course.
Thank you. Um, just really appreciate everyone's comments. Um, I do think it's super helpful as always to hear from folks who have firsthand knowledge, have questions, have comments. Um, I would say a couple of things. One is I will be putting the report, the isotope full report on the town website. Um, hopefully tomorrow I meant to get to it today, but didn't. Um, so I'll be happy to, you know, make that available. I can do a news blast or, you know, people want to contact me and I can send it to you. So that's one thing. The other is, um, one thing I've learned by diving into this topic a little bit recently is an awareness of how the technologies have changed so much. I think we all, I personally have visions of huge towers. You know, clear cutting the woods with big roads. And I I will just say, we don't know what kinds of proposals might be out there to help the town address the coverage issues. As Woody mentioned, there's a lot of small tower, you know, facilities that are being developed that I've seen in other towns. We don't know exactly what we're actually talking about until a company comes to the town and says, this is what I'm thinking about. These are the areas I'm looking at. And then that process would absolutely go through every kind of, you know, review that a special permit does, which includes wetlands um review by the Conservation Commission. It would include all the kinds of environmental um assessment that we've been talking about. So I I'm just sort of giving the context of that. I don't at all mean to diminish the concerns that have been raised tonight, which are good ones.
Thank you, Kristin. It'd be great if you can get that report up.
Thanks, Kristin.
Yeah. All right. All of that said, I would uh enter, um, let me make a suggestion that we uh for next Wednesday night, uh, we notice uh continue the public hearings to seven oh five rather so we're not sitting here for ten minutes looking at one another as we did this morning. So would anyone care to make a motion to continue both the public hearing on the MBTA Communities Multi Family Overlay District and the proposed amendment to the Wireless Communications Facility, uh Wireless Tower District until next Wednesday night, which is twenty eighth at seven oh five PM via Zoom.
I'd be happy to.
All right, um, I'm not sure who made that motion. What's it?
Mary.
Oh, Mary. Okay. Is there a second?
Absolutely.
All right, Peter. Thank you. Any discussion? Then Peter, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote on the motion? Woody? Oh, you're muted, Woody?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
And Scott, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
All right, and I vote yes as well. So uh we'll continue these to uh next Wednesday night at seven oh five via Zoom. And got a lot to think about based on what we've heard. But thank you. All right, our next item on the agenda are two concurrent public hearings for one seventy Orchard Street map R twenty lot forty-three A. Owner applicant, the estate of Louis Bulgares care of Diane Yurkovich. Both continued from January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. So we have the definitive subdivision plan application for Fields Way, one seventy Orchard Street and the Common Driveway Special Permit for a common driveway serving two lots on proposed fieldway subdivision, one seventy Orchard Street. So we'll open both hearings. And just a reminder, uh, this one is has a history, as you know. Uh, so the only voting members on the subdivision are myself, Pete and Woody. And the voting members on the Common Driveway Special Permit are myself, Pete, Woody and Mary. And I'd also note for the record, the applicant has provided an extension of time for action in the subdivision application to February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four. So I think at the last meeting, uh, the board reviewed the drafts of both the subdivision decision and the common driveway decision at the last public hearing and revised draft uh are to be reviewed tonight. Before going through the revisions, uh, do the board members have any questions at this point? Okay, hearing done. Martha, I I think if you can put the revised draft subdivision decision up, please.
Sure.
And if you would be good enough, Martha, maybe I I don't think there are too many revisions from last time.
No, there aren't. So this should be relatively quick. Is everybody able to see that?
I can see.
Okay. It's always hard because I've got two screens here, so I'm not quite sure who's seeing what. Um, I'll make this a little, little bit bigger. So the the only changes to the um uh draft subdivision decision really came out of discussions with Vanessa Johnson at Essex County Greenbelt following the last session of the public hearing. As you recall, one of the um requirements from Essex County Greenbelt, and I'm just going to scroll down to the um conditions here had to do with monumentation, excuse me, of the corners of parcel A. And um Essex County Greenbelt had requested that um I'm sorry. Um, had requested rebar or similarly durable physical markers at the um at the property corners and Bob Griffin had also requested that um stone wall, stone walls be acceptable where the walls intersected with the property boundaries. So after revealing this with Vanessa, her suggestion, he's she said basically, yes, the stone walls would be fine where they coincide with the property boundaries. But drill drill holes in the existing stone walls and there are several drill holes that are already noted on the plan. Um, and in addition, they would like the point at which the boundary between parcel A and lot four intersects the stone wall that that is behind Pearson Drive. They would like a drill hole placed there or iron rebar or drill hole spray painted with fluorescent paint. So that was the one additional thing. So in in general, the stone walls are okay. The other suggestion was we had a can, uh, part of that condition was uh home buyers acknowledgement of active agricultural and recreational property. And Vanessa's suggestion was that we delete that from this particular condition G and move that up to be part of condition E as as part of the declaration of homeowners including an acknowledgement that parcel A will be subject to active agricultural use and recreational use by the public. So and all the other changes were just adding adding dates. Um, then one other thing that I did suggest, which came out of a discussion regarding the common driveway uh special permit decision was changing the start time to eight AM on Saturdays. To be consistent with that decision, which was discussion discussed at the last meeting.
Very good. That's it on the subdivision, Martha?
Uh, yes.
Yeah. Um, how about, do the board members have any questions? No, how about the applicant? Do these changes look satisfactory?
Michael, you're muted.
Hi Larry, thank you. Uh, I'm fine with those. Thank you. It's Michael McNiff. Uh, Sean McDonald is here for Bob. Bob, Sean, you're okay with that?
Yep, looks good to me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good. Do you want to pull up the common driveways decision then, Martha?
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. I should ask if there are any public comments on on the subdivision. You see anything?
No, I don't see anything.
All right, then if you could, would pull up the common driveway decision.
So the changes on this were mostly administrative, just adding in the uh the dates. Uh, clarifying that the applicant was represented represented by Bob and by Michael. Sorry, I'm not making you dizzy. Um, then the construction, the construction hours, the eight o'clock AM start on Saturdays. And we had already discussed changing the requirement regarding the certificate of occupancy to be tied to the installation and inspection and approval of the the binder course. So that's that's really it. Not much in the way of changes from the last time the board looked at it.
Okay, um, there's still, um, the town council still has to uh review the draft deeds, lots three and four in the common driveway agreement, correct, Martha?
Uh, that is correct. We haven't gotten comments back on.
Although I I I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off. I think under our by law, I don't think we need to hold off um uh taking a vote on this, uh, but it it that will have to be accomplished before we can sign off on the plan, I think.
Yeah, before the plan is endorsed.
Yeah. Um, so let me ask the board members again, any any questions on the common driveway uh decision? No, uh, Michael and McNiff, anything you'd like to add?
No, I appreciate all your help. I do. I know it's been a long haul, but hopefully we've come up with something that I think works for everybody.
I think so, yeah. Uh, Martha, any comments, see the written or uh uh anyone in person who's on the meeting perhaps from the public?
Uh, nothing written and I don't see any public uh raising their hands.
So again, I'm just looking at my notes here. Also, we're going to need the performance guarantee at some point. Again, I don't think it needs to hold us up tonight.
Just before the plan gets endorsed.
Town Council review and approval of draft deeds, that's underway. The HOA Declaration of Trust, that's in process. Again, it's going to be required for the building permit, but not endorsement. Is there any other information we need from the applicant, Martha? At this time?
Uh, there's nothing else I can think of. I mean, there there steps that need to be taken next, especially the uh chapter sixty-one A notice of intent to sell and that that whole process.
But we're ready to go forward on a vote on this.
I don't think there's anything else pending.
Great, great. So would anyone care to uh move to approve the subdivision decision as presented? Thank you, Mary. Uh, is there a second?
Yes.
Thank you, Peter. Uh, any discussion? Okay, no, I'm sorry, Mary. Yes, you're I gotta start over again because you're not a voting member on the subdivision.
That's right.
So let me, let me try again. Would either Peter or Woody care to move to approve the subdivision decision as amended? Oh, thank you, Woody. Is there a second?
There is.
All right, uh, any discussion? Then Peter, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. I'd also um ask for a motion uh to uh close the public hearing on the subdivision. All right, what do you think? Uh, thank you, Peter. Do I have a second?
Sure thing.
Any discussion, hearing none? Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. And on moving on to the common driveway, uh, Mary, you are voting on this one. I'd ask for a motion to approve the common driveway uh decision as amended. So that would be a good time, Mary. I'm sorry, I'm getting I'm getting silly. Do I have a motion for you?
Actually, Woody made the motion, if somebody can say.
Woody made the motion. Thank you. Do we have a second?
There's a second.
All right, Pete, thank you. Um, and any discussion, hearing none? Then Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes, yes.
Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. And could I have a motion to close the public hearing on the common driveway special permit?
So moved.
Thank you, Peter. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thanks, Woody. Any discussion, hearing none? Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. All right. Michael, I think.
Thank you, everybody. Well, job well done, Martha. Thank you for all of your help. You helped guide us uh through. Appreciate it.
Uh, thank you. So I will get those decisions ready for everybody to sign. And just as a reminder, um, the subdivision needs to be filed with the town clerk by next uh Wednesday, the twenty eighth. So we'll need to get that signed before that.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Uh, next item on the agenda, the public hearing continuing seven Bittersweet Lane map, uh, U O nine lot twenty-one B Common Driveway Special Permit Application. Owner David W Foley Senior and Nancy J Foley, the applicant Gage Foley. So we'll open the public hearing. And again, I'll note for the record, the voting members, uh, myself, Pete, Woody and Mary. Uh, we did get a uh an email from Steve Sawyer that he was not going to be able to attend tonight and requested that the board review the draft decision and continue the hearing to March twentieth. I don't know if uh if Gage Foley is here. I don't see him.
No, I don't see him either.
Uh, well, I think we can still go forward and take a look at the decision, Martha Gately.
Sure.
Uh, before we start, do the board members have any questions before we get into the decision? Comments, questions about procedure? No? Okay, why don't you go ahead, Martha?
All right, just a second here. So um pretty, pretty standard language. We do have some questions for, just want to get kind of clarifying uh exactly the ownership. We've got two trusts involved. So that's one of the things that we'll be uh touching base with Gage and Steve. But we've got um the procedural history here when the application was filed um owner of record. So that's one thing that we want to will want to get confirmed because Foley uh family revocable trust is actually the owner of, uh, seven and eleven Bittersweet. There's actually another owner, the nine Bittersweet Trust in between. Um, peer review engineer, Steve Sawyer represented the, uh, applicant. Uh, Joe helped us. Uh, the public hearing, uh, started and then, um, this language is about the, the Z B A process. Um, because the board was advised by town council that it did not have the authority to waive the design specifications um, regarding the width of the driveway. Uh, the applicant at the time was requesting that it be reduced to uh, twelve or fourteen feet instead of the required sixteen feet. Um, and that the angle of intersection be allowed to remain at thirty degrees instead of the sixty degrees required. And that the driveway be super elevated instead of being crowned as required. The board took a straw vote, um, and indicated that it didn't, didn't support a variance request for the width of the driveway, but did support the cross section and angle of intersection. So the public hearing, the planning board's public hearing was continued to December twentieth while the applicant sought relief from the Z B A. The next paragraph talks about the application to the Z B A and when that was approved, that has gone through the process and the appeal period is done. Then the next point is that the public hearing resumed on January seven, seventeen and was continued to tonight and obviously will be continued further. And, uh, no, no dates for the vote yet. Uh, description of the project, um, which also may need a little bit of clarification because the common portion of the driveway actually goes only over nine and, nine and eleven, uh, Bittersweet. And the branch that serves seven, uh, comes off of that and crosses uh, crosses nine Bittersweet. So for the next time, we'll get that language clarified. Um, then the reference materials, the original application and what was submitted subsequent to that. Uh, the board went through the findings, um, and found that the application met all of these, all of these findings as required. And then the decision um, with conditions regarding recording the special permit, um, requirement for approval by other boards and agencies of the town. Uh, the easements and homeowners association agreements. Uh, the deed deeds and, um, homeowners agreement need to be reviewed by town council. Uh, construction hours um, which here reflect the recent discussion about eight start, eight, eight o'clock start on Saturdays. Um, per the recommendation of the police chief. And then the certificate of occupancy, uh, similar to one seventy Orchard Street being tied to the, uh, binder course approval of installation and approval of that, and then a lapse provision that it would lapse in two years. So that's that's it, basically very similar to the one seventy Orchard Street.
Yeah, thanks, Martha. We've already, just for the record, we've already, um, gone over the findings at prior, at prior meeting.
Correct.
Um, any, any, um, questions from the board members? No, hearing none. Martha, any, uh, public comment?
No.
Um, okay, then if there are no other questions, I'd ask for a motion to continue the, uh, public hearing on this, uh, special permit to March twentieth, twenty twenty-four at seven fifteen P M via Zoom.
So moved.
Thank you, Woody. Um, any discussion? Okay, a hearing on Pete, how do you vote?
Second and yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. It's past my bedtime, you know. Okay, thank you for the second. Now I'll ask again, any discussion? All right, hearing on Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. So it's continued until March twentieth at seven fifteen P M. And that includes our agenda. Martha, anything further before I ask for a motion to adjourn?
I can't think of anything.
Okay, good. And would anyone care to move to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Woody. Is there a second?
Second.
Mary, I think, yeah, you're just second. No discussion? Uh, Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes, and good night, everyone.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes, and thanks, guys.
Oh, and Scott, I'm sorry. You, you can vote on this one. How do you vote?
Thank you, Larry. I will vote.
Yes.
All right, thanks. And I vote yes as well. Uh, thanks, everyone. Uh, we've got a lot done tonight. I appreciate it.